Your planning board meeting to order, we all rise for a pledge of the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the secretary perform the call attendance, please.
Here.
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 Here. Okay, all the board members have received the minutes from the February 6 meeting. If there's no discussion regarding the minutes, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, motions made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay, our first item on the agenda this evening, it is an adjourned public hearing for Aguado subdivision. Entertain a motion to open the adjourned public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Is anybody here for Aguado? Bill's not here, he's coming?
How you doing?
Good evening.
Zoning Aguado applicant. I don't know what he had planned for tonight, but I know the big thing was, we didn't get the variance for a neighbor's property because of the zoning board meeting being canceled last week. So we're still waiting on that. But the main thing is, we'd like to get a negative deck prepared, so we can get it over to D E C. Because that's basically what they're waiting on.
Okay, what do we state with the negative declaration? It's going to be required or not at this point?
Well, I mean, you can authorize us to prepare a negative declaration under the assumptions that they will be granted with this variance. You would not be able to adopt it.
Right. But the neg deck is just the neg deck if they're not asking for the whole approval at this point.
No.
Yeah, I mean, you could, I mean, notwithstanding, I mean, notwithstanding the variance.
Right, because the normal process is the neg deck is adopted with the site plan approval.
But we can absolutely do this separately, or you could authorize us to prepare a resolution and a neg deck under the assumption that the outstanding items are going to be addressed.
Yeah, that's what we're looking for, is to hopefully have a resolution prepared.
The complete red.
The March 14th meeting, we're expecting to have that variance, and then we'll be back here on March 20th.
Right, so that's, right, and the zoning, the next zoning board meeting is the 14th?
On my end, I don't know what John's most recent letter looks like, mine. My outstanding items are minor, nothing that would result in a substantive change.
There's nothing, nothing that, this is all housekeeping stuff, stuff that could be addressed with the, that could be put in a resolution.
Yeah, or, or elements that are up to the attorney and the engineer's approval, or the highways.
Yep.
Yeah, our comments are generally the same, pretty, you know, pretty minor housekeeping items and getting their other regulatory approvals.
Okay, all right. So, okay, so with that, this is still an open public hearing. With that said, I just, is there anybody here in the audience that would like to speak? Does any comments regarding the Aguado subdivision? Okay, seeing none. Entertaining a motion to close.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, seeing none, motion carries. All right, so with that, obviously you'll have to reach out to your engineer, just because there, you know, there are some open-ended items.
There are some minor comments that you had to address.
And the variance, I guess, to, you know, to finish off the other issues you had on the entrance. So if everybody's on board with approving that having the planner draft a resolution, I'll entertain a motion to. Okay, so a motion to approve the planner to draft a resolution of approval?
So moved.
All right. Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, seeing none, the motion carries. No, it'll just all be, it'll be put under, if we're doing a resolution approval, the planner will put the neg deck within that approval process, as we normally do. So, I guess you have to finish up with them, then we'll have the approval for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Yeah, it's closed. Yeah, we just made up, that was the first vote, yeah. Okay. All right. Okay. All right, our next item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for Tora Grasso subdivision.
What's going on, Brian Stokosa, Dan Stokosa Engineering. We were in front of the board, last month, we went over this one, this one's an older subdivision. I think we started it in '05, and I think.
Oh, hold on, Brian, we, yeah.
Make a motion to open the vote here.
Yeah, motion's made.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. A little formality.
A little formality, right?
All right, go ahead.
Older subdivisions, three-lot subdivision, one existing house along All Angels Road, and they're proposing two new residences. Residents will be shared via a single driveway, then branch off into individual driveways. This subdivision, I think our final approval goes back to like 2009, 2010-ish. We just never carried across the finish line to file the map. Long story short, some time has passed, so we're here to update the approvals and shake the rug on it. And with that, at the last meeting, we had some discussions regarding the house placement. We were asked to bring the houses forward to give the applicants more of a backyard for a possible pool placement and just general livability. So that's like really the only major change we made to the plan, is to pull those, pull those houses up. Individual septic systems are proposed, these were originally designed back in, again, in the early, to mid 2000s. So the design standards have changed slightly, so we've actually used the new standards, which actually make the systems a little bit smaller, more efficient. So we've gone ahead and shown that graphically with some details and some grading. Each of the houses will be served via central water extension, same as the original plan that we submitted. We've had verbal communications with Dutchess County Department of Public Works. We showed them the same plan that was approved back in the early 2000s. We hope to have a meeting on site, but basically everything I've heard from Bill Triflo is that if we're not changing the entrance, the standards have remained the same. Let's just be out there and make it formal. We'll do the same thing with the water department, we'll obviously update them with a new set of plans. Also stormwater, the regulations have changed tightly, so we'll go ahead and modify the plans according to C P L's letter, I don't think there is any showstoppers there, other than just the basic slip requirements and truck turning radiuses that we should add on there. Other than that, we are making a submission to the board health to go through the septic design, so we should be getting that in the process. I think from the board's standpoint at the last meeting, I don't, I think that the house placement was the biggest one, where we moved them up. Other than that, just a straightforward two-lot subdivision.
Okay. Now, we did, there was some discussion earlier, just about the two driveway proposal, you know, just showing that two driveways could be put in if needed at some point. I guess on the original plan that was proposed, there was no pond, I guess, or no basin being put in. Did things change that drastically, that there's going to be a requirement for, to hold back a lot of water, or is it?
So that pond was part of the original plan, because we just, basically just took the information from the old plan and applied it to the new.
Okay.
I'm thinking there probably was a reason why we went through that exercise. But if there is the ability to, you know, reduce the size of the pond, and, you know, go switch to more of a chamber system, where we get it into the ground, and just visual presence alone probably look a little bit better. But we can go through that. The history of how we got to the pond, I mean, it goes back almost 20 years, maybe 15 years, and I'm thinking it was a board requirement, because it was a pretty heavy improvement. If the board wants us to show that driveway, we'd probably have to switch to some kind of a chamber system to allow that driveway to be constructed.
Yeah, with the, I mean, you know, more or less, it's about, you know, the whole thing's about just showing that you can, at some point, for some reason, if needed, you could, you know, you could do two separate driveways.
I don't think it would necessarily change the engineering of it, but if there's an engineering solution, you would say, you know, if we needed to, we would put these two driveways here, and we would have to rework the stormwater system to look like this. And then, because unfortunately, I think if you can't do that, you can get a variance to say, you know, we can't show two independent driveways, can we get a variance for that? But if you don't want to do, it's going to be less work than go to the D V A and say, you know, an alternative engineering system would allow us to put these two. It's for conceptual purposes, showing us that it's worth.
Just off the cuff, has anybody gotten a variance, asking that?
Nobody's, I don't think anybody's saw.
So it would be the first.
There's one pending.
There is one pending?
That's what the Aguado variance is for. So our code requires that you demonstrate the ability to construct two independent driveways. Again, that's as a conceptual. So if you could, you know, demonstrate, you can construct two independent driveways on the lot as configured with, you know, appropriate stormwater. It doesn't have to be built, but it should be a separate detail, and then, you know, as a separate sheet or whatever. And then, you know, if the board is satisfied with the fact that that's buildable, you can then go back to what's here in the, you know, in the submission.
Yeah, it's.
With this lot, there's some flexibility there, I think we could, we could graphically show that.
Okay.
My only other question for you was, on the D E C side, have you had any communications with D E C? Your E A F aims you for landing circle, I don't think that there's habitat there, but if we can get an email correspondence from them saying, yeah, we should pull it back, there's no harm.
Yeah, that's in the process. We saw that fit, and we just haven't had a response yet.
And then you want to add the bat notice as well?
Yes.
Yeah, but the bat's more just a note on the plan, more than anything, okay? But it's the, it's the other, all right. John, do you have any?
Like Brian mentioned, I mean, the majority of our comments are housekeeping items. I would, you know, if there is an opportunity to look at that stormwater pond and make perhaps change the engineering a bit, to go with chambers or something like that, that may make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
So, that's one of the things we suggest that they pursue.
Okay. I mean, at this point, I mean, does anybody have any, the board members have any questions regarding this one?
No.
I mean, we're kind of in a, it's kind of an awkward spot, because it was kind of almost approved, and now you're, now we're back to this, which is just basically addressing some of the more updated, you know, requirements by D E C. Well, it is a public hearing.
Yep.
So that's the other end of it, so. Is anybody in the audience that wishes to speak, or has any concerns regarding the proposed subdivision? Okay, seeing none. Yeah, there's really no, I mean, it's kind of a, yeah, I mean, if we, I mean, if we close, excuse me, if we close the public hearing, at this point, we're still waiting upon some type of signal from the D E C, I guess.
Which hopefully comes in any day, I don't know how long ago you started the process.
I think it was, yeah, it was like three weeks ago.
Yeah, I would poke them periodically, just because I know some projects that go on and on and on, don't hear back, and you're just looking for, you know, you have to know. So, that's why, if we close the public hearing, we start the clock, and we don't know when D E C's going to be back.
That's my only, that was my concern, is just the clock, I mean, unless you're willing to waive that at this point.
With this project, that's fine.
Yeah. You waive the 60, 60-day requirement.
Because we had a little bit of tinkering to do with the drainage, which we started, we saw the comments, and we agreed, there's.
Yeah, so. Yeah, waive the 60-day requirement, so with that being said, you want to close the public hearing at this point?
Can you motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries.
And B, just note for the record that the applicant has waived the 62-day clock.
Okay, so at this point, I mean, it's really just waiting to get, to get some confirmation back from D E C.
D E C.
Yeah. And then also, at the same time, I guess, maybe you can, you know, work on, you know, some type of a, you know, mitigation, in case there needs to be a second driveway at some point. You know, at least something, as they were discussing, something on paper. Obviously, what's here, I don't think any of the board members have any concern about the shared driveway. If I'm correct.
No, not my driveway.
So I think that we're, I mean, obviously, I think you're on the right track. So we're just waiting on that, and we can go from there.
If I may, with respect to moving the process forward, if you could get a description, a legal description for the shared driveway, and a proposed common driveway agreement, you know, we can start looking at that.
You want similar legal agreements with the proposed stormwater?
Yeah, well. Well, I guess that's a.
Should your maintenance of this stormwater?
I guess that's a question. Are we going to do a drainage district for this?
It's all three lots share it, right?
Lots two and three.
Just two and three?
Yeah.
So create a drainage district as well, or do they get put into a?
Maybe we could put that in the common driveway agreement.
Okay.
Seems like an awful lot of headaches for two lots.
As a shared driveway slash stormwater maintenance agreement?
Because, I mean, because the issue is, the stormwater here is for these driveways, it's not, it's, you know, typically, we do a stormwater, we do a drainage district when it's.
But when it's a subdivision with a, right, with a public roadway.
So, and, you know, this is close enough, so maybe if we extend the boundary of the easement area to include the drainage in addition to the driveway.
Okay. So drainage agreement with the shared driveway?
Right.
Okay. Anything else, any of the staff wants them to produce, I guess, prior to moving forward? No?
At least my page has seven items.
Right, they addressed the others, and then just the stormwater issue. All right.
All right.
So I guess at this point, I think that's, I think you have a, pretty much a good direction of where to go.
Got a good direction, ball's back in my court.
So just as far as the stormwater for the SWIP, I guess you should note in the SWIP that there'll be a maintenance agreement between the two properties for the, I guess that should be in the SWIP as well.
Yeah.
All right. I guess that's, I'll take care of that one. Oh, okay, I know he's, I know he's standing up there still. So our next item, our next item is a discussion item, which is also same engineer. The children's enrichment project. Everybody, we received the resolution of approval that was drafted by the planner. With the board members, I mean, I know there was some communication earlier regarding this, does, do we feel that we have to make any changes to the resolution as it was drafted?
No.
No? Okay. All right. So we'll leave that alone, you've, you've also reviewed this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the applicant as well, they have no concerns?
They were fine with it.
Okay. All right. And I guess they'll go ahead and they'll fill out all the, you know, everything on the site plan prior to them getting a C O. So with that, I guess it comes down to a vote at this point. So anyone want to make a motion to approve the resolution as drafted?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, okay. No opposed, motion carries.
I appreciate. And then one quick question.
Yes.
For the extensions, Riverview Land Company, do you guys see any problem with that not getting an extension?
For which one was that?
First one on the extensions, Riverview.
Oh, Riverview.
Yeah, we did the site plan on that, I just didn't know if I should hang around.
No, I'm assuming they're asking for a, they're asking for the second extension. It's probably, it was based upon the same issues as the, they just don't have the volume right now to support it. Yeah, I don't think there's going to be an issue with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Go home and see the kids.
All right. So that will, okay, we'll just, we'll vote on that later on.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thanks, guys.
Take care, bud.
Yeah, didn't we do that? We did. Yeah, just, we did close the public hearing on Tora Grasso, correct?
I did.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we did, we voted that.
I'll speak louder.
Yeah, sure, we did, okay. Okay, all right, get back on track here. All right. So we're, next item for discussion is Lucari subdivision.
Good evening, board members, Albert Roberts, I'm the attorney for the applicants. I represent both the developer and the property owner. This is a proposed two-lot subdivision. Regrettably, we thought this was going to be a much easier project than it's evolved. There are problems with the existing septics, which we had expected to use for both of these parcels. The solution is to connect to the town sewer. We have a letter going out to the town board to authorize an extension to the Central Wappinger Sewer District, and that process is going to take some time, but the letter will be out and delivered tomorrow. This property is in an R 2040 zone. And if the property is connected to either municipal water or municipal sewer, the minimum lot size is 30,000 square feet. If it's connected to both water and sewer, which we think is virtually impossible at this point, the lot size is 20,000 square feet. Initially, we thought we needed a variance, which we applied to the zoning board and received, and to answer some of your questions, the variances were thoroughly vetted. Jim Haran was present, and he can, and so was Barbara, and he can verify everything that I've just said. But in the meantime, we will be working on some of the issues that the engineer and the planner had asked of us, but we won't be presenting anything further until we find out if the town board will authorize a conceptual approval to the town sewer. Other than that, at this point, I'd just like it adjourned for at least 30 days, maybe 45, and we will report back to this board the results of our communications with the town. Anybody have, Malcolm, did you have any other questions on this? John?
No.
Okay, any, board members have any questions?
20,000 for both water and sewer?
If it's connected to municipal water.
Of water and sewer.
The closest water is either, I think it's town hall, or probably the school district, but the school district actually taps into the village lines, not the town lines, even though the villages, or the junior high is in the town. The closest sewer connection is Camilli Drive, which is 500 feet, which the developer is proposing to construct and dedicate to the town. And we're hoping that the town board will authorize this extension.
All right, yeah, at this point, I don't think there's any, I don't think we have any questions regarding it. The subdivision seems pretty straightforward.
Yes.
So, yeah, I guess at this point, it'd probably be, work out the issues, I guess, with the, you know, with the town board, and once they've made an agreement, I guess.
And we will notify you as soon as we hear.
Yep.
Okay, could it be the first meeting in May? I think that would give us sufficient time to.
Yeah, that'd be, yeah, that'd be fine, if you want to, if you want to set a date now, or do you want to, if you want, you could just schedule with.
Well, I think.
No?
It's not a public hearing, so.
Right, so we don't have to set a date certain today.
We'll connect with Barbara.
Yeah.
We'll just go by whenever your submission comes in, the next one.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, we could do it that way.
Thank you for your attention.
All right, no problem, you're welcome. Okay. Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is a site plan and special use permit for Carmax Auto Superstore.
Good evening. John Thatcher, CenterPoint Integrated Solutions Development Consultant for Carmax. We've got the rest of the project team here with us today, Steve Udeck from Carmax, Karen Malvadovski from Bowler, Paul Mercer, lighting expert, as well as Jennifer Gray here as part of our zoning and land attorney's team. So, thank you, Karen, we appreciate you having us back here tonight. As you know, we've been working with you all for a little over a year now on this project, and we've made a lot of adjustments to the site plan based on the input we've received during that time. And, um, we've made a lot of adjustments to the site plan based on the input we've received during that time. You know, moved the building, rotated the building, decreasing driveways, increasing landscaping and buffering area, adding loading space, um, things of that nature. And I think we're, we're shaping up and happy to, with, with where the plan is going here. Seems like coming into our last meeting, we're down to just a few remaining issues, mainly regarding lighting and the public parking lot. And with this latest smittle, we think we've addressed those satisfactorily. And so, um, I guess I'll, I'll take a moment to give kind of a high-level overview of the changes we've made since then and, uh, and also discuss some of the more recent comments we got and the letters, review memos just received. So, um, since our last meeting, we have addressed the latest comments regarding fire and emergency access. So we revised our truck turn template to show a car carrier in the loading space and that the fire truck, emergency vehicles, still have the ability to maneuver through the site even with both of those loading spaces in use. So we've shown that routing. Additionally, we've shown storage location of vehicles in the staging area along with a 24-foot striped, uh, fire lane, which will be striped through the site to make sure that access is maintained. And then as far as the public parking lot goes, the customer and employee parking lot, we've, since the last time we met with you all, taken a closer look at the code and realized that, that honestly, we, we kind of misinterpreted the standard from the very beginning. The town considers, uh, the town's code limits the number of spaces available for customer and employee parking specifically. Carmax certainly utilizes that area for those needs. But there are several other, numerous other activities that they're utilizing that area for, such as temporary parking for cars that are being loaded and unloaded from car carriers, cars being dropped off by customers, appraisals, things of that nature beyond just parking for customer and employees. So what we've done is revised our site plan to limit the amount of customer and employee spaces to the 30 total, as requested. And so, we still have those other spaces, but the remainder of the spaces are going to be designated as employee-controlled. Karen, I think you had it there. Yeah, thank you. Uh, and so... It's similar to what a lot of other dealerships in town have done. Those will be designated both on the plan here. Tried to color-code it there a little bit, but the spaces in red towards the front would be the true customer and employee, public parking spaces. And the rest of the spaces would be these employee-controlled spaces, as I mentioned. And those would be designated, um, actually onsite through a combination of signage and painted markings on the stalls, as well as a fence delineating that rear portion of the site to be an employee-controlled parking area. And so, um, because we've kind of made that change and really delineated the two, and made a distinction between the two types of parking there, we are withdrawing our waiver request for exceeding the number of customer and employee spaces. We are providing the 30 allowed and, and no more. And the rest of the spaces will be employee-controlled and will be designated as such on the plans and, and in the field with the means that I discussed. We are still requesting the waiver for the reduced aisle width in the inventory lot. And so, we've updated our waiver request to reflect all of those changes. And then as far as the lighting goes, we've made some significant changes to the lighting plan as well. Obviously, that's been a topic we've gone back and forth on quite a bit. But with our latest smittle, we have reduced the color temperature and the max foot candle limits to the code-required levels and included other necessary details on the lighting plan as requested. We've added louvers to all the perimeter lights to ensure that there truly is no light spill over the property line. And so with those louvers in place on those perimeter lights, you, uh, it will shield the light source itself. You cannot see the light source from more than seven feet away from the light. So, we're containing all the light to the property itself, no light spill, adjusted the color temperature and the max foot candle limits to within code guidelines. So, um, I think we've made a lot of positive changes on that lighting plan. We are still requesting a waiver for the pole heights themselves. 19-foot is what's requested, and that's just simply a factor of reducing light pollution as well as the number of poles required for the site. And then as far as comments received in this latest round, there were just a couple. To address them very quickly, there was one regarding site layout. And the reviewers noted that the auto hauler movements would conflict with, had some conflicts with opposing lanes. So, we haven't gotten that fully fleshed out yet, but we'll obviously take a look at that. I'm sure there's, uh, there's a resolution for that. Again, we just received these memos very recently. Lighting, there was a note about the bug rating of the light fixtures provided related to glare from that lighting. So, I have the team here. We can discuss further if needed. I guess the one thing to point out there is, again, we do have the louvers on the perimeter lighting and we are limiting light spill across the property line with 0.0-foot candles at the property line. So, none of that light is coming off the property. And so, I think that, that should mostly address that. But again, we've got the team here. We can discuss in more detail if you'd like to. So, uh, that is, I think, a good summary of where we stand with this. I really think the plan is looking good from our standpoint. I feel like we've hopefully addressed most of the concerns that we've been working on for the last year. Thanks again for having us, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any of the board members have any questions regarding what's currently being proposed?
Well, it seemed like they, they did what we asked, it seemed like.
Yeah, they've made significant changes to the, to the lighting, which is good. Yeah, yeah, they've addressed, yeah, they've addressed most of the concerns. So that the truck, so the, the car carrier truck turning template, you're going to be able to kind of tweak that to make that work so that...
Again, I mean, we, we haven't had time to...
Right, I know, I understand, but it's something you feel that you can make.
Yeah. Karen, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Good evening, Karen Malvidowski from Bowler, for the record. Yes, regarding the auto hauler truck turn, so, um, everything, just to reiterate, works onsite with the flow that's there around the gray shaded area. So we're just going to revisit when they take a right out of the site to head back towards Route 9, whether or not that that driveway needs to be widened to accommodate the truck so that it doesn't cross the center line.
Okay. All right. All right, so that, all right, so you'd be able to address that then. The fire department access, that won't be addressed till next week because the Fire Prevention Bureau doesn't meet until the 14th, so...
Okay. Do you need anything else from us on that, or...
Yeah, they'll address the, you know, for the, the access around the back of the building.
Right.
And the rest of the site as well. Any of the staff, you want to, if you have any questions, I guess?
I would just take this moment to point out something we discussed in the pre-meeting. Something that our traffic engineer had suggested, but I included in my memo, was the possibility of a gate at that entrance. But discussing in the pre-meeting, the, the possibility of that gate not being open when an auto hauler arrives and then pulling over at the fifth town is, is the worst-case scenario. So we think that that should probably be, that's not the right place for a gated entrance. I'm confident that you'll be able to tweak the, the radius and eliminate that conflict. I, I was curious to speak to your, um, lighting expert. I know that throughout this process, he's talked about glare as, as sort of being the worst kind of lighting pollution. And with the, with the increased pole heights and the bug rating before, it just, it raised some concern. And I'm, I trust that there are design considerations being implied here. I just was, was hoping to have him address that while we have him in the room.
Yeah. Paul?
Good evening. Excuse me. Paul Mercer, Lighting Design Innovations, uh, here on behalf of Carmax. So, as far as the glare concern is, is we have put a control on the light fixtures so that any of our neighbors cannot see the light source from those perimeter light fixtures whatsoever.
That's the, the note in the plans, the louvers for the perimeter.
Yes, and so all of those louvers, so glare is about visibility of the light source. That's what we talked about. And by eliminating, uh, by putting in those additional louvers, you cannot actually see the light source, um, any further away from seven feet from those poles. So, that means that anyone that is in a residential property, a commercial property that is close to our site cannot actually see those light sources.
And the, the, I guess the light poles on the interior of the site that the louvers would not be applied to, are, are they also going to have glare issues? Would you be able to see that lighting fixture directly?
They're, they're quite far away from any of them, so that they should not be able to, um, to be able to see those types of glare. Because glare actually is, so you talked about bug rating, and I was quite happy to see in your code that you actually don't put a limit on, on a bug rating because that's backlight, uplight, glare. For, for those of you that don't know, and for those of you that do, a little history perhaps is that, that, that particular acronym came from a technical group that was a committee that was looking for something to be able to control roadway lighting. So, what they said in the original portion of that particular document is that glare is looked at as a sight because of these viewing angles that we referred to and that we had talked about previously. So, when you look at this particular site, we've done everything possible to be able to make sure that we're energy efficient. We reduced light trespass. We've reduced light pollution tremendously. And those perimeter fixtures, which you don't require us to put louvers on, we have because it's our belief that we should be, um, good neighbors to the people that are around the property. Hope that answers your question?
Do you want to, okay. Do you want to discuss the height, the height issue as well, or? Do we want?
We, we can. The applicant has represented that the increased...
No, 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 they've increased all the, right, to, to kind of meet the standard. So, with the number of, with the height of the light poles?
Yeah.
Obviously, they're meeting the current standard right now with what they put on paper. Do we still want to, do we, do we want to address that?
They're still requesting a waiver to be increased.
Correct, that's what I'm saying. Do we want to address that issue with just the number of light poles?
We can.
There would be an increase of, or...
Of additional light poles that they will need. I think that it would be quite a bit of homework to, to revamp this lighting plan to figure out, you know, how, how could they do that with 15-foot poles? But they have done a number of other elements, particularly, my, my concern with increased pole heights is there. And I know that they have been doing additional measures, as you just described.
So, so basically, so basically, the current proposal, you're satisfied with what's there and it's compliant with the current standard? Okay.
I think last time, didn't he say that when they had the high poles, the light goes down, it doesn't go out?
Yes.
So it shouldn't be an issue?
Well, they put, they, they put the louvers on there to direct it down, correct? Yes.
So how tall are these, how tall are they going to be then?
They're going to be 19 feet. Instead of 17, 17-foot pole on top of the two-foot concrete base.
Correct.
And the, the current code prescribes 15 feet with the ability of the planning board to, to waive that requirement in the interest of the design. I mean, that's totally up to you. My biggest concern is regarding lighting length that addressed. And the, the standard of, of design is high enough that I think that if this waiver was to be sought in the future, that this would be very good history.
So they brought it, they brought this back into line with what the code requires. That's, that was my, that's my biggest concern at this point.
They brought the color temperature down, they brought the lighting foot candle level down.
Yeah.
And for the purposes of efficiency, they would like to increase the pole height. But in exchange, they've done a number of other...
They've done the other, they've done all the other items at this point. Okay.
Yeah.
Four additional.
Four fees?
15, 19, yeah.
Okay.
But being said, I mean, we still have, uh, a public hearing to...
Right, then we have to schedule at this point.
We're certainly not in a position to accept that at this moment if the board would like it to.
Yeah, no, no, that I know we have to still address this evening. But that's, but everything else, at this point, I think the majority of the major concerns have been addressed.
I'm not even with the changes that have happened to lighting, the turn rates need to be addressed.
Right, but that they can, yeah, we have time for that. They, they know that they have to address that for... John, in terms of the engineering aspect, you're pretty much...
No, they're, they're in good shape. We had several SWIP comments in our previous review, and they addressed pretty much everything. So, from our standpoint, it's, you know, well, the majority of the remaining comments could actually be conditions if we get to that point.
Condition, yeah, what you have left is basically conditions of approval.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so at this point, I mean, we've, we've gotten, you know, we've, we've kind of dwindled this down to, you know, the, the little bit of stuff left now to deal with. But on the other end of it, we still have to have a public hearing to hear the comments from, you know, any of the neighbors. But again, I think most of it now has been addressed prior to even having them come in. So, I guess we'll leave it open to, when would you be willing to, or when would you be ready to have a public hearing?
Well, we were just discussing that, I think, you know, we, we definitely would like to request that, you know, the documentation be prepared, prepared for the seeker notice of determination. And if we could maybe approach that topic and then maybe look to schedule a public hearing for, um, I think the first April date would be, would be the preference. If, if we were able to do seeker at the next available, uh, planning board meeting and then a...
Yeah, so we, usually, we don't make a separate determination for seeker. Usually, we do it all with the one approval at the end of the...
I see.
At the end of the process. At this point, I mean, there really isn't, as far as I can see, there's no real issues that are arisen from, you know, what's been presented so far. I think you've addressed everything that needs to be addressed, so...
Thank you, Chairman Flower. For the record, Jennifer Gray from the law firm of Keenan Bean. So if your typical procedure is to have the seeker determination at the end with the final determination on the application, I think procedural, it seems, procedurally, it seems the next step is the public hearing. And we would ask that that be scheduled at the earliest opportunity that the board would allow, given, you know, an opportunity for public notice.
Okay, so, um, yeah, so I guess, Secretary, what would be the next available date? Okay, so, um, yeah, so I guess, Secretary, what would be the next available date? Would be the April meeting?
The first April meeting?
It would be the soonest, yeah.
And that was the, the third?
So if that's.
Is it also your typical procedure to have resolutions, um, available, um, for that meeting?
To have a?
Typically not.
No, no, usually not.
So depending on what the comments are, you know, the board may, yeah, do it for the next meeting, so.
Understood.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, in case, in case there's public comment that creates.
Absolutely.
The need to address something, um, that would be, you know, we'd hold that off.
Okay.
Okay, so the first, so is the first a good date or the second, it would be the second?
Third?
It's April.
Oh, it's April 3rd, sorry.
That's the first meeting.
Yeah, first meeting, so April 3rd. Third of the, yeah, third of the 17th, I guess, would be the other option.
Uh, I think first available is the preference.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um.
Make a motion to spend it in a public hearing for April 3rd.
April 3rd, all right, so motions made?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll see you on the 3rd.
Thank you very much for your time, thank you.
Chairman, can I ask a quick, quick question?
Sure.
Are any variances required?
Go ahead, Paul.
On Carmax?
On Carmax.
No, it's just a waiver.
Just a waiver?
Yep.
Just a waiver, yeah, okay.
What about the high? Oh, it is, okay. He, he kept calling them variances.
Okay, um, all right, so the next item on the agenda this evening is Meyer, Myers Corner Solar Farm for a site plan and special use permit.
Hello?
All right, good evening.
Malcolm, I found the part two and part three and I emailed it to you. And B.
Uh, it's, it's been a while, but you guys may recall, um, that we gave a, an agrivoltex presentation to the board some time ago.
I remember.
Um, and we've been busy at work going through, uh, the permitting process, various studies and consultations with agencies, et cetera. Um, and we're here tonight to introduce our site plan application and special use permit application, uh, to the planning board. Um, I'll give you guys a, a, a quick background on.
Could you just give us your name, put your ask for the record?
Certainly. Um, Sam Bailey from Lightstar Renewables, um, on behalf of Old Myers New York LLC. So this dual-use agrivoltex project, um, is a three-megawatt DC, um, solar array in combination with continued agricultural use in and around the array. Um, the, the project will utilize, um, a single-axis tracking technology, um, where the panels rotate, um, east to west, tracking the sun. Um, and we're partnering with the Thompson family who's the, uh, the owner of, of the property and ultimately will be, um, the family that, that farms this, this property. Um, right now, we've, we've worked with the Thompsons, um, and our consultant, um, Ian Ward from Solag to put together, uh, a farm plan for this, for this project. Um, it's going to be a combination of tomatoes, lavender, um, strawberries and blueberries, um, planted in between the rows of, of the array, um, and maintaining that agricultural use of the property for the duration of, of the project's life. Um, this is ultimately a community solar project, um, so it will provide subscriptions to local Central Hudson, uh, residences and businesses, um, and offer utility bill savings to, to those customers. That's the, the, the general overview of the project. We've received any number of, of comments, um, from the town professionals. Um, I've got a, a couple clarification questions for you guys about some of those, some of those questions, but for the most part, very straightforward and, um, we'll get to work in terms of, of answering those questions.
Just right off of that, while we're on the subject, uh, the, the farming element of this, does it include any kind of, um, you know, like a, like a community element? Are there, are expected to be anybody coming to this site that are not involved in either the solar or the agricultural caretaking of this land? Is it going to be?
That's, that's not the plan. Um, the, the plan is to have the Thompsons fully conduct all of the, the farming activity here.
Not a, kind of, you know, strawberries, kind of, you know?
No.
Yeah, okay, that's just a quick, you know, do we have to ask additional questions about farming?
Certainly. Yep.
That's not for community consumption rights, for, for personal?
The, the produce?
Yeah.
No, the, the produce will certainly be sold to the community.
Yeah, but it won't, yeah, it just won't be.
It's not pick your own.
The public, the public won't go there to like pick it themselves, but yeah, they could sell it at the farm stand, so they won't need.
Oh, you just sell it at the farm stand?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, any number of outlets, um, selling directly to restaurants, selling through a farm stand, um, relationships to local grocers, um, you know, your, your, your typical outlets for selling produce.
Okay.
I think about John, I know that I've got a long letter that we can, you know, we can go through it, if you have clarifying questions, uh, it's the perfect time to ask. Um, John, I don't know if you have a letter that you'd like to, to go through.
No, it's the same, but why don't we have him ask us for his clarification script?
Yeah, that makes sense. Again, um, I think most of, of the questions that you guys have asked, it's, it's a simple, um, you know, provide, provide the information on our next submittal, um, include additional language, uh, very, very straightforward. Um, but a few of the clarification questions that I have, one of the questions, um, asks if the, uh, the proposed action falls within the view shed of, of the Hudson River. Um, I've certainly seen before where towns will have a, a scenic overlay district or something, uh, to that effect. Um, does, does the town of Wapanger have a scenic overlay district?
Like a scenic Hudson overlay?
No, we, we, we don't have a scenic.
Like a local, you talk very on a local level.
I, I don't think this is in the view shed.
It's pretty far in.
Yes.
It's about three and a half miles.
Right.
Yeah. When you're standing on this field, can you see the Hudson River?
You cannot. Okay.
Can't see it from anywhere.
Yeah, so, I mean, is there, is there any additional, okay.
No.
All right.
No, it would just be a situation where, you know, standing on this, standing on this hillside, you can clearly see the Hudson River, which means that if you're on the Hudson River, you can clearly see this hillside.
Yep.
And so there's additional screening requirements for putting solar farm within the scene, the view shed.
Actually, there is a New York State Department of State, I don't know if the states, this property's outside of it, but there is a state scenic overlay district that's established by the New York State Department of State, which this isn't in.
From a distance?
It ends at Route, uh, the furthest in, at any point in the town, I think it goes to is Route 9.
Okay, so it's like, they have like a set distance from, from the actual river itself?
Yeah, there's actually a, a map now that he mentions it, but this is not in it.
Okay. All right.
Do you have other, or five questions?
I do. Um, the, the project in, um, in the, the southwestern corner of, of the project, um, does have proposed agriculture and array area in the hundred-foot setback to, um, what is ultimately a, a man-made, um, wetland from poor drainage, um, Central Hudson property next door.
Exactly. Um, did it come up, is there, is there documentation on that that came up during, uh, the secret process that describes it as a low-functioning wetland or, or anything like that?
So it's, it hasn't, you know, it's not determined to, to be the result of, um, poor drainage through, um, through a, a Central Hudson culvert down here, but it's, it's quite obvious that that's.
That's how.
That's how it was created.
Especially if it's not connected to the string at the back or anything like that.
Exactly, ultimately an isolated wetland.
Is that area that you're proposing, the solar arrays, is that hundred-foot buffer area that currently being used for agricultural purposes?
It is not, but, um, you know, one of the, the co-benefits of, of this project is, is that we're increasing the, the farmable acreage here.
Okay.
So, you know, this, this area will be farmable acreage. Um, but we know, we noted that in your, in your questions, you guys had mentioned, um, a, a local wetland disturbance permit application. Um, so, you know, one, we're curious to know what, what that looks like, um, but also, um, are interested in getting your perspective on whether the project, you know, would be, would be able to get relief from that permit application given the agricultural use, um, and that, you know, I believe that.
I, I think that, you know, speaking as somebody, I'm not involved in that permitting process, but, um, you know, solar arrays, ground mounted solar arrays and agricultural use is probably the least impactful, depending on whether or not it's, you know, that area is being fertilized or, you know, to what degree it's being fertilized or treated, but, um, compared to an application that's looking to put a parking lot there or something like that, I, I would imagine that you would be granted some level of relief from that. My other question for that area is, um, is it currently forested or are you, are you doing tree clearing in that area as well?
We are clearing trees in that area.
Okay.
Um, but certainly not within the wetland itself, um, but within the buffer area.
Is it an Army Corps or an A, uh, a DEC wetland?
Um, we're still waiting to, to hear, um, whose jurisdiction it is. Um, we're very confident that it's not DEC jurisdiction.
All right.
Um, you know, it's possible that the Corps says it's non-jurisdictional, um, or that it's, um, that it's core jurisdiction and has, you know, the Corps doesn't have any setback requirements for their wetlands.
Yeah, it's, I just looked, it's not on.
Just Kevin.
So it's not mapped on the national web.
It's not mapped along as the, as the A or R jurisdiction, it's because you have mapped it and identified it, that being said, I don't know how, I mean, all of this would weigh into that permitting process. Um, I can't guarantee that you would be granted that permit one way or the other, but, um...
Who does, um, does, what board treats that, that permit?
The, the planning board.
Planning board, we deal with it.
Okay.
So typically, so, um, um, agricultural activity in a, in a, um, in an ag district is exempt, um, but the salt panels themselves wouldn't be.
The vast majority of our overlap.
Right.
Is, um, is actually simply going to be ag, it's, it's actually not the, the co-utilization.
So there's, so there's no, there's no panels being put into the buffer?
There are panels being put into the buffer at, really kind of at the edges of the buffer. It overlaps with a hundred-foot buffer, uh, but the majority of, of the area will be used for agricultural purposes. Um, and then in addition, you know, removing those, those trees, um, it will, will help to cast less shadow on the solar project and again, you know, maximize the, the farmable acreage.
So the fence that comes in and goes around that wetland area?
Yes.
Everything on your side, that would be used for agricultural purposes?
Yes.
That's all being, and would be exempt from, uh, the buffer impact? It would just be, um, so really it would, the only element of the wetland disturbance permit would be the places where, uh, the row of panels comes over the line.
And you can't encroach into a buffer, so the panels really can't be there?
No, you can encroach in a buffer.
Well, you can, yeah, you can.
With the disturbance.
But the disturbance permit, you know, limited, limited amount.
So in looking at what they have here on the site plan, it looks like there's two whole, um, array, two whole arrays in it, um, two panels and then a portion of maybe three others, four others. So, you know, and how many, how many supports are there typically for a panel?
Each rack has, has a pile. I don't know off the top of my head how many piles will, um, will go in here, but, um, even the, the Army Corps of Engineers doesn't consider piles to be permanent impact, um, because there's, there's no permanent fill. Um, it's, you know, we're simply.
Driving something.
Driving something into the ground.
Yeah.
And, and ultimately, when we go to take it out, pulling it out.
Yeah, well, like a helical pile onto the ground and then just mounting off of that.
In your, in your next submission, uh, with this revised narrative, would you be able
to pull out, you know, um, the number of piles that would be going into that buffer area and the surface area of the solar panels that would be going in, just to give context for that, uh, wetland disturbance permit?
Certainly, you know, we, if the, um, if the application will require a wetland disturbance permit, you know, of course, it's something we'd like to, to get right on.
Yeah.
Um, is that permit application made available on the town's website or it is available on the town's website? And the review of that application would just be done in step with the remainder?
With the, with the site plan approval process?
Site plan and special use permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then there's another wetland at the rear of the property, but the fence line is outside the buffer.
Correct, yeah, there'll be no overlap there.
Okay. Okay, there was some discussion, I guess, earlier with the buffer in the front. Does that, that buffer goes just from the driveway?
Are you referring to the screening buffer?
The screening buffer, sorry, uh.
That's in, in yellow here.
Okay.
There's also an element to the code that you probably seen in my review memo, uh, it talks about screening between this property and any adjacent residential uses. Um, and that, that, I know, just while we're talking about screening, um, if you could describe, uh, what level of screening currently exists between any property line that you share with a residential use?
Certainly, so the, the rear lot is, is R80, um, the lot to, to the east is R40, uh, the lot to the west is COP, I believe.
Right.
This, I mean, the, almost the entirety of the parcel with the exception of a portion of the road project, um, is surrounded by hedge rows.
Okay.
And the, the parcel that's, uh, to the east, there are no buildings in close proximity to, to the water line, this is, this is all air.
Yeah, it's just, you know, hypothetically, if that were to be developed additionally in the future at some point, right?
Yep.
We'll need to, we'll need to operate as though that land is being used for residential purposes.
Yep. And again.
And I trust that there is existing screening, uh, the, the code just talks about maintaining that existing screening.
Yep.
So, I mean, just all, all additional information to put into a narrative that demonstrates compliance with the special permit.
Certainly, yeah, I know we'll, um, we'll provide adequate detail in, in our responses to the comments.
If you have pictures, that would be wonderful.
They're not necessary, but... Okay.
If you have them, if you've already taken them as part of all of this, right, you'd do that, yeah. You would certainly speak louder than however many words would be used to describe it, yeah.
Picture's worth a thousand words.
Yeah, what's gonna be going on in the front too, by the road?
Yeah, so the, along the, the road frontage on Myers Court Road, this is where we have a landscaping plan.
Will it be tall enough?
They'll be planted at about six feet, I think it's like five and a half, six feet. And the species that we're selecting are, you know, meant to, to grow quickly. It's also a diverse selection of species, you know, so that if, you know, one species is not doing particularly well, that the whole thing is, is, is not struggling.
Eventually you won't be able to see the solar panels from Myers?
That's, that's the intention. Although, you know, we think that particularly a, an agable takes project that, I think right now, our plan is that the, the front portion of the project is going to be all lavender. Maybe not necessarily something to hide, but, no, we've, you know, we've, we've got this proposed planting there.
It'll smell nice anyway.
Yeah, it'll definitely smell nice.
What's the setback on the front, just for the, the board's identification?
Seventy-five feet. Forty feet on, on the side lots, yeah.
Seventy-five feet, that's how high it's gonna go?
No, seventy-five feet sat.
It must give me a heart attack.
The first, the first solar panel will be seventy-five.
Yeah. There's no plans to incorporate any type of battery storage in the future?
There's, there's not a plan to do that.
Okay.
No, not at this time.
All right. Anybody else have any questions?
I just wanna make sure that, you know, when you do the water just pray, you don't wanna see a bunch of...
Yeah, I know.
We have a town parade and it looks really nice.
The total panel count, I think just shy of five thousand panels?
Five thousand?
Nobody wants to see solar panels.
Do you have a, a square footage on what, I mean, you said the number of panels, how big is each of those panels though?
Um, off the top of my head, I think they're, each panel's about seven feet long, maybe three feet wide. The total, um...
What square feet approximately is one?
The, the, the total panel area, I think it's like eight acres or something. Actually, no, it's quite a bit less than that because just our fence area, the, within the fence area is eleven acres. So typical ground coverage ratio is actually usually around like fifty percent. So, it'll be five acres of panels.
What's the service life for these panels?
Thirty-five years. You know, we'll conduct ongoing operations and maintenance of the, of the solar project. You know, very, in rare instances, a panel will fail and we send out a, a, a maintenance crew to replace that panel.
So you expect to have ongoing continuity for the indefinite future?
Yes.
With these things?
Yeah.
What happens when technology changes, which it's forever changing and these become obsolete?
It is.
What do you do with these panels, what happens then?
They'll get recycled.
Okay.
Can we replace them? New, more efficient ones?
Either stick with the tech or upgrade the tech.
Possibly, you know, it's certainly not.
Right, something like that, right?
I'm sorry with that.
Stick with the technology or upgrade the technology.
Yeah.
Because technology never stops.
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's certainly not part of our plan as we sit here today, because we can't speculate.
Right, you don't know what the future holds.
Right.
But I just wanted to make sure there's gonna be an ongoing maintenance with this, especially if you're gonna be contracting with, you know, with customers that want it through the Central Hudson, I'm assuming you're gonna lock them into certain rates that are more attractive than the rates they'd be getting with their general utility.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely the case.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds good.
So, and you don't have to respond to this now, because I, I think that it will require some, some math to, to get us an exact number, but I'm curious about the total surface area. Take a note of this, section two forty fifty-seven E two. Take a look at that, it talks about the surface area of solar collectors in a residential zone. Out of everything that I've pulled out, that's the only thing that gave me pause. I think that you'll be able to demonstrate compliance and everything else, that's just the one question that I have.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah.
One item I'd like to address is, we had submitted a letter along with our site plan application to the planning board requesting permission to, to clear trees ahead of March thirty-first. I'm sure you guys are familiar with the northern long-eared bat tree clearing window. So to be compliant with U.S. Fish and Wildlife, you know, we would ask for, you know, to be granted permission to do so.
I think we're, I think we're a little too soon. That's, I, I'll leave it to the staff's recommendations here, but this has been an ongoing discussion. We don't have, I mean, I, I, you know, I'm, you know, I know we, we implemented rules in the past and we had code changes in order to do so and everything keeps going. I mean, that there's first, you know, the first opportunity to get to, to see this at this point, you know, I mean, it gets to the point where, you know...
Well, my only question that might separate this application from others that we look at with the tree clearing, is that, well, perhaps you can answer this. Independent of the, the, the solar arrays, is this tree clearing also being proposed for agricultural purposes?
Absolutely.
If you, if you don't construct any solar arrays, would you also seek to clear these trees entirely, the same trees? That I think is something for the board to consider.
Well, I don't, I mean...
If it's agricultural, I think that we have a...
So I think it's outside the purview of the board.
Huh?
I said, tree clearing for agricultural purposes would be...
Right.
Outside of the purview of the board...
Yes.
And not needed.
Right.
I don't believe we have anything on our code that requires a permit to treat, to treat, clear trees for agricultural operations in an ag district.
Is the property in the ag district?
Technically, technically, yes. It's been farmed for a hundred...
Was it added to the, was it added to the, was it added to the ag district?
Has it been put, has it been put in an agricultural district, the property? Is it part of the Dutchess County Ag District?
That, that was going through with this whole zoning, rezoning thing, but it's been actively farmed for overall...
I, I understand, but in order for the agricultural rules to apply, you have to be within the ag district. So has the property been accepted into an agricultural district?
Asked, yes.
Is, the question is, is it currently in an ag district?
That would be, say that question for a second.
Yeah, I, I don't believe it is.
Would it put in application, has it been opened to add it to the agricultural district? Do you know when that application process started?
I, we haven't put in an application, perhaps the Thompsons have.
Now, you, because it was supposed to be swapped over from R forty to R eighty or R eighty to R forty.
You know, the, the zoning is actually a different issue. The, the ag district is from the county, so...
But then, yes, it should be in the agricultural...
No, went from forty to eighty.
And it should be grandfathered. No.
No.
While we're looking that up, in the letters about the tree felling, you also mentioned removal of hedge rows. You just stated that, you know, hedge rows as kind of a block to the other property, although some of the hedge rows you're gonna take down, that's gonna be a buffer to the property, you expect?
Certainly not on the property line. But, you know, the, the bulk of, of the tree clearing, it's, it's about three and a half acres of trees. There's a hedge row that runs through the middle of, of the parcel here, and another hedge row on the northern part of the, of the property. That's where the bulk of, of the tree clearing is going to take place.
And the county wants to make sure you're not in the area of the wetland or the wetland buffers, which can remove the trees?
The, we are proposing to, to clear trees within this wetland buffer. Again, you know, for agricultural purposes, we certainly, you know, will not be within the hundred foot buffer of, of the, the wetland to the west.
And one comment to this.
You have to come up, you gotta come up to the microphone, you gotta give your name and address for the record, please.
Sean Thompson, owner of the property.
About eighty percent of the trees are invasive that are in the hedge rows, so they're weeds. You know?
No, no, I understand, you know...
So D E C regulation states to take them down legally.
What, to take them down, right, D E C, in terms of for an agricultural purpose you're talking about?
In terms for any purpose, they're invasive to our state.
Okay, but we don't have, all right. But is there anything that you did, bring anything in, you know, that's, that's giving us number of trees, things like that?
I'd be...
What we're, what we're taking down versus what's staying, I mean, I, I...
I'd be happy to do so.
Huh?
I'd be happy to do so.
Right, I understand that, but you're looking at a, you're looking at a very narrow window of time. You come in on March the sixth and you have to cut these trees down by the thirty-first. If we can't make a decision tonight because we weren't given the information, then we're looking at the next meeting to entertain that, which would be, which would be two weeks from now.
Yes.
The, the tree clearing area, if you look in the copy of, of the permitting set, it's the hashed area that's on there. I'd be happy to, to pull it up on the computer and take a look at it.
Bruce?
Okay.
If someone in the twenty had to show us proof they're in the ag district and what they're taking down, let's look at the nine days to felled the trees, not removal, but...
Right, to felled the trees, yeah.
I think so, nine working days to felled the area if this board is so inclined to allow it. But that's based on bringing in information.
Right, versus, versus if they were in the ag district, they could just do it at any point in time.
No.
Right.
Ag district still has to follow the bat compliance.
You still have to, under the ag, under the ag district rules, you still have to comply with the March to, March to October timeframe?
When we're clearing trees, we can take down individual trees.
Okay.
But we can't clear trees because of the, the bats.
So D E C regulates for that, then?
Yes, sir.
Under the ag rules?
Yes.
That would give us time to check and assess it more to see if they're in there.
To see if they're in the ag district to begin with.
And then that gives us more to get you a plan to remove the trees.
Yeah, 'cause I, 'cause I believe if, if I remember right, and I don't have the information in front of me, but again, it's, not only is it the, you know, again, this goes back to what's in the code.
So here's what's in the code.
Go ahead, you just read it back, 'cause I, it's...
Okay. So notwithstanding other provisions of this chapter, the contractor, planning board may by resolution at its sole discretion allow the felling of trees on a property prior to the approval of the site plan when the timing of such felling is deemed by the board to be in the best interest of protecting the Indiana bat. However, in this context, the removal of stumps shall not be permitted and the movement of felled trees on, onsite or offsite is prohibited further. If the board approves said tree felling, all of the following shall occur prior to the cutting of trees. Applicants shall submit a sufficiently detailed plan provided by, prepared by a design professional acceptable to the planning board, which shows the area proposed for the tree felling. A bond or other performance guarantee in an amount as determined by the town engineer for the possible restoration of the land being developed shall be filed with the town. That may not be necessary here because of the, you know, the agricultural use. You may look at it with respect to the wetland buffers. Notice of intent and stormwater pollution prevention plan shall be approved by the town if applicable. Applicable inspection fees and sufficient escrow shall be submitted by the applicant to the town. Tree protection for the trees to be preserved on site. Erosion and sedimentation protection and wetland protection measures as applicable. No tree felling under this section shall take place in any regulated wetland or regulated adjacent buffer area. Applicants shall attend a pre-construction meeting with the town building department. And that's two forty dash ninety-three point one.
So really, the, the bottom line on that is they still need to provide us a plan of what they're looking to do.
But that, even independently of all that, they would not be able to clear the trees in the wetland buffer until, until a wetland...
Until a wetland, until, until a permit has been issued to work in that buffer.
Yes.
Right, so which is probably not gonna happen, that won't happen right away. But everything outside of it would, but would happen, I guess, or we could allow that after the next meeting.
So also, if the property is not included in an ag district, annually, from April fifteenth through March four, May fourteenth, Dutchess County Agricultural and Farm Land Protection Board accept application from landowners who wish to enroll their properties in the ag district. So in, from April through May is the ag district application process, as you noted. So theoretically, if you get accepted into the ag district, you can cut down the individual trees after you're in the ag district.
But he can't clear trees, he can't clear...
Well, it's cutting.
How much, can you pay your estimate?
The estimated area of tree clearing, I know that's on the plan, is three point five, three point five acres.
And that's just felling them, that's not...
Just felling them, no growing, no stumping.
Or removing them.
Correct.
And it's not old growth.
It's new scrub trees, sweet trees.
For the most part, there's, there's about three old growth trees that are damaged. And aside from that, it's scrub growth and mostly lantus.
Invasive?
Yes.
Was any of that bat habitat?
No, sir, but New York State requires the whole state to abide by it, where it's long island.
I think that, I think that if we had time, they could get correspondence from the D E C and the D E C would probably just say, this is not like the habitat.
Yeah.
But we don't have the time. The D E C would not respond to that amount of time.
Yeah, and the D E C has effectively told us, we need to adhere to the tree clearing protocol.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, so if you clear everything outside of the wetland buffer...
Yep.
You may be able to get, if you get in the ag district, you may be able to get an exemption from D E C, based on the ag, agricultural use and then for nature of the trees. Because they're looking at shagmar, kikori, and, you know, tip, you know, trees that... The one thing you do wanna do is put, take down all of the diseased trees as soon as possible, because they're not subject to our code.
So how does this work, if the planning board is so inclined to allow that and they're not in the ag district, do they have to go to law?
Well, the question, the question for the amount of the, the amount of the bond contemplates restoration. If it's for an ag use and it's gonna be farmed, I don't know how much that bond would be.
We just did this in a nearby town, New Windsor, three point seven acres, very comparable. We put up a thirty thousand dollar performance bond.
For tree restoration?
For tree restoration.
Please that you get it back after your final approval?
Correct.
Go on.
Which we would be more than happy to do.
And that's typically the number that...
Right.
The ballpark number that we...
But don't deal with the restoration end of it.
Yeah. I mean, so, so really, the, the big issue becomes, you know, the wetland issue plus an N O I, an N O I in a, well, you, you, actually, we had this go around with, what was the, was it Myers, where Walter said we didn't need a N O I?
Right, yeah, he, he said, he had a long discussion with Natalie Brown.
Right.
And she said it would be inappropriate... And she said it would be inappropriate to gain coverage under the permit for just tree felling.
Right, because we're not.
Right.
Right.
So, so I think if you give at least a preliminary SWIP so that the town engineer could look at it, but you wouldn't need the NOI.
Which they, they did submit a preliminary.
Okay.
You know, a SWIP.
Okay.
We haven't completed our review of the whole thing, but I think, you know, based on the discussion, if they come in with a plan that shows where they're going to do the clearing and they're willing to put up a performance bond, it sounds like they could make it work.
Yeah.
I do have that, that image, we could review it right now.
Well, I think that based on the code, they would not be allowed to.
Still wouldn't be allowed.
They wouldn't be allowed to clear in the buffer, but I think that a lot of this is outside the buffer and that would certainly give you a place to start. And once approvals were granted, should they be granted, you would then be able to clear inside the buffer. And hypothetically, by then, it's November 1st, November 31st.
No, we would, that sequencing would certainly work for us. And even in, kind of like, you know, if, if we're moving along with the rest of our schedule and it becomes a hangup that we've still got trees within the wetland buffer area, we could do a BAT survey for that very limited portion.
Right.
Much more feasible than doing a BAT survey for three acres.
Or, or at that point, have been admitted into the Dutchess County Agricultural District and secretly from DEC or market offices to clear trees, or do a tree survey and have a BAT survey. Yeah, absolutely. I think that, I think that that could work if the board is inclined to grant that.
So we can talk about that.
It all comes down to.
Let me ask the board, how do you, do you feel favorable or you really don't know how you feel right now?
You know, again, it falls back to, it falls back to precedent. That's, I'm just going to, I'm going to throw it out there because I'm, I'm going to just, out of, this is just me personally, all right? I am very frustrated with the way that, that the, you know, that the professional staff has acted towards these issues. We've had subdivisions come in and you want us to read them the riot act because they've gone way beyond what they should have done. And then we've had other instances where they come in and it's, oh, you don't need to do any of that stuff. You know, I know that there was provision put in the code, you know, for this, before, before that was in the code, it was always, it was always a hard no to everybody. You know, now it's kind of, it's getting kind of wishy-washy and I just, I kind of get concerned because we're, we're going all over the place here. Tonight's the first, you know, time that we're seeing this application, you know, all these items, none of this stuff is on paper right now, it's not even shown to us exactly what they're looking to do. Be honest with you, if the request was asked or I missed it because I didn't look, you know, I probably didn't look through the entire package. So I wasn't prepared that you were even asking for this tonight. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
So just for the record though, it's this date of the 16th, I agree with Bruce because I'm roots on the ground, and I've had nothing but problems with the subdivisions that have been giving tree felling. They've gone too far, they say they're going to stump them, next thing you know, we're putting some work orders, degrading, it's been a nightmare on quite a few of them. So for the record, Bruce is 100% right.
I concur. Well, we would certainly, you know, again, put a bond in place to, to hold us accountable. And, you know, the Thompsons are going to be the ones that are out there doing the tree clearing. We'll also provide our survey group to go out and flag exactly where.
The lens.
Yeah, sorry, exactly where that line is, that demarcation between trees that are to be cleared and trees that are not to be cleared. You know, I also, I think it's worth noting that the project has gone through a secret process with the zoning board.
Town boards.
Well, the town board, it wasn't, you didn't go to the zoning board.
Process before the town.
Before the town.
Right.
Thank you. And, you know, if anything stands here in perpetuity is that this is creating additional agricultural land.
For a local market. Meadowbrook will be our primary market, will be growing what they need to sell so they don't have to go outsource and buy.
Correct.
And we're looking to make this as minimal pesticide and pesticide. We're growing our own topsoil for the project and everything's already in place for this.
Okay, so I just, I think that, I just think that without everything in place, I mean, if we just give a blanket approval right now, you know, without you submitting anything, you know, to see what's actually being done, you know, or what's being proposed to be done, I think is a little, it's a little premature. I mean, do you think that you would be able to submit something for our next meeting? And then that gives you a narrow window of time to go ahead and do this work, because I believe it's the 31st is the deadline. So you'd have to get this stuff.
The deadline.
Get these items taken care of. So that puts us, it's the 6th, it's the 20th, so the meet, right, the next meeting would be the 20th. And then we can make a decision at that point. So if we make that decision on the 20th, then that gives you, you know, roughly nine to 10 days.
I have to clear.
Right, to go ahead and, and, you know, take the trees down.
Yes, sir.
At the same time, I, I'm going to leave it to the board if they want to go look at the site ahead of this, the next meeting.
I would say yes.
If anybody would like to come look at the site, you're more than welcome to.
Okay, so does somebody want to propose to go do a field trip for this?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second for a field trip, but we'd have to pick a date.
Name a date and time and I'll make it happen.
On what? What, next Monday? Yeah, I'm not, the 13th, I'm not going to be available, but kind of the 13th and 14th of, huh?
Sunday morning.
Both will, I've got to work, you know, I have a regular job.
Sunday morning.
Oh, Sunday morning, yeah.
Unless you work at a church.
We could do Sunday morning, the 12th?
Yeah.
After church.
What time would you like to do that?
Not too early.
Huh?
Not too early.
Nine?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, nine o'clock on the 12th?
12.
Okay.
If you have it, you guys are over there.
All right, so somebody made, you made the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, motion made, say all in favor?
All right.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll go out there, we'll, we'll, on top of this, we'll go out there and actually, you know, take a look at the site on, on the 12th at 9:00 AM. We'll take a look around. In the interim, you'll put together some of the package to, to have for us for that, for that next meeting, which would be the, hold on here. That would be the 20th, would be the following.
Yes, I'd just like to ask, because we certainly want to give you guys everything that you need to make an informed decision, you know, what exactly are those?
To delineate where you're going to, which areas you're proposing to take down the trees.
Okay.
Outside, outside of the, outside of the wetland buffer.
Yep.
And you're proposing to, you're proposing to put up a $30,000 bond?
Yep.
Okay. And then you said also the NOI is, also has to be?
No, the NOI, Walter indicated that is based on a discussion with DEC that an NOI is not required.
Okay, so DEC, all right.
But a SWIP has been provided.
But a SWIP must be provided.
Yeah, no, every.
Yeah.
Has been.
It already has been.
Okay, so they have that already, all right.
When you, when you do the area, make sure you subtract the area within the buffer. I know that we've been talking about 3.5 acres, I don't know how much of that falls inside of the buffer and how much falls within, but if you can, that's.
It's probably going to knock it down to 3.2 or 3.1.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, it is in the existing permitting set that we.
I mean, if you, if you could just take it out and make it a separate detail for the board, I think it'd be.
Okay, yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
And maybe flag with a couple of marks around the buffer so they know what is.
There is.
What there, all right, so it is, it already has been marked out?
Yep.
Okay.
And also, I mean, we've asked for a lot of information from you, you know, with the board's permission, I think that it's safe to say that, for the submission for the next meeting for March 20th, 20th?
Yes.
So the 20th, so we've probably gone beyond the submission, but we'll make an exception if you get it in within, I mean, you, you still need a little time to review it ahead of the meeting? So by the, so if they have it in the Tuesday before the?
Yeah.
Before that meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tuesday I'll turn it around.
Which would give us the, here a second.
But again, you know, I have a lot of outstanding items on my comment memo, you can take this time to focus on the tree issue and save that for the third submission.
Okay.
If you're short on time.
Yeah.
Prioritize what's time sensitive.
Yeah, again, you know, I thought a lot of the questions were really straightforward.
I think that a lot of it will just be a yes or a no, or, you know, this is how, you know.
I guess just one question regarding, what's the status with the interconnect with Central?
We have an interconnection service agreement with Central Hudson.
Okay, oh, okay. And if you, so if you, that's one of the requirements, so if you could provide that.
Yeah, certainly.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, I think that was one of the comments. In terms of process, you know, I saw that the county had provided comments, so you guys have already issued for the 239 reviews. That's, that's correct? Okay.
Yeah.
And the overlap between the secret process that we went through with the town board and the secret process that we go through with, with the planning board, you know.
So seeker is done?
Yeah. Seeker is done.
You did coordinate review, seeker has concluded, there is no additional seeker process.
Okay.
So basically, it's special permit and site plan approval from this board.
And a wetland disturbance permit.
A wetland disturbance permit, and then whatever, you know, outside, I know there's been some correspondence with county DPW regarding the entrance, and I think.
Yeah, as long as what was originally proposed versus what's being proposed now is the same.
Same entrance.
Right, okay.
And then, you know, any, anything from, I don't know if, I guess you're not looking to disturb any DEC buffer.
Nope.
No.
So the only thing we're looking at from that end, I don't know if.
Just about.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, did you have your funds with DEC during the previous secret process? Did anything else get raised by them other than the BAT window?
Just the BAT window, but we are waiting for, you know, their final response to our consultation letter, just, you know, with their, you know, confirming the jurisdiction of the wetlands.
And SHPO, what was that correspondence like? Because I saw that also on your DAS.
Yep.
One, the seeker has concluded, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so the, we ended up doing an additional architectural survey because of proximity to historical resources and submitted that to SHPO and satisfied.
But you did get, you got the letter from the county, though?
I did get the letter from the county, yep.
Just making sure.
So we make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
No, there's nothing to adjourn at this point, they just need to submit for the next meeting. So we made the motion for the public hearing, or it's not public hearing, sorry, for the, for the field trip, which will be the, all right, 9:00 AM on the 12th, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so.
Do you guys know where to meet? The Central Hudson substation.
Yeah, by the substation there.
Yeah.
I'd meet over there.
You can park anywhere near there and that's where our current entrance into the property is.
Okay. All right. There's some paths cut through there already? It's not all overgrown?
It's a double gated area.
Okay.
So I have keys to both gates to get in.
Okay.
Actually, at 189?
Yes, sir.
On the GPS.
Okay.
Okay, you turn into Lardell and it's the first.
Right. Okay.
Will, not, not the meeting on, on the 20th, but will the following meeting be a public hearing?
Well, we haven't scheduled a public hearing yet, so that would be the next, you know, and I guess it depends, I mean, outside of, yeah, I mean, outside of the current comments, I mean, is there a lot that really needs to be significantly?
No, I mean, I've laid out a number of elements of the special permit that I'd like a narrative addressing. I don't think that any of them, one would be of any concern, the one outstanding that is concerning, I'll address. But I don't know that it would alter.
It's not, it's not going to significantly change anything on the current plan.
No, and I don't think that the tree clearing question as to when it may or may not happen will affect the subplan.
Yeah.
So, I mean, seeker's already concluded this is.
So to go ahead and, to go ahead and schedule a public hearing for, so that would be the first meeting in April then?
April 3rd.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be the first opportunity for a public hearing, if you wish to do that.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Not April 1st, April 3rd.
April 3rd.
Yeah, I keep, why do I keep saying the first? All right, so entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for April 3rd. Motion's made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed, motion carries.
Would anybody like my information just in regards to meeting on that date?
If they're just, give it to the secretary and then, so we have it available for that day in case we need to, in case we need to reach out to you.
Awesome.
Okay. Okay, so I guess we'll wait to hear from you for the next meeting now.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, I just want to be sure, in terms of giving you guys adequate time to review ahead of the 20th, what was the date?
That was the, to submit by the March the 14th. Right, which was the Tuesday before the, the meeting.
All right.
Six days before the.
Yeah.
Okay, and should we just go through the legwork of putting that decommissioning bond in place? Of course, like, you know, it would only be activated if, if you guys gave us approval to, to move forward, but I don't want that to be, to be a holdup, so we can come prepared on the 20th with a decommissioning bond form?
Well, that will be put in the.
Well, it's a restoration.
That'll be put into a resolution of approval.
I'm misspeaking, sorry, restoration bond.
Oh, the restoration bond?
Yes.
Yes, we need the restoration bond for the next.
Would that be a cash, cash bond or?
It'll be a cash bond.
Okay, we, we can, we can coordinate with that and we'll get the paperwork and John can issue a letter.
Okay.
If you would just send, like, the, you know, the, the area that's proposed to be cleared, even if you just send the sheet, that we can, you know, we can work off of that to put the bond in place.
Okay, and we'll include a note on the, the sheet that has the tree clearing on it, we'll include a note that deducts the, the trees that are within the 100-foot buffer.
Yeah, I also, I mean, for, for the record, I know that the board is planning to, to take this field trip, but while you do the field trip, any pictures that you can take of the area that's proposed to be cleared, to be added to that record, I think would be useful.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I will also include species, I am an arborist, so.
Very good.
Okay.
All right, well, thanks so much for your time, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hold up, Barvino.
Okay, so, yeah, okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is Barvino Restaurant with redesign for an architectural review. roof redesign for an architectural review.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is Frank Rettles. I'm the project manager for Rettles Properties. One of our LLCs owns 1099 Route 9, the old Hudson Ribs and Fish. Uh, I've got a picture of the rent, a picture of how it looks today. We want to get a building permit to remove this tower and just bring the roof flush straight across. It, the tower's old, it's outdated, it's ugly, we want to get rid of it. A condition precedent to that building permit is to come before this board and get, and get architectural review approval. Uh, again, we just want to remove the tower portion and just bring the rest of the roof straight across flush, as is shown here. We're gonna match the shingles, so it looks the same.
Okay. So you're not reconstructing the roof on either side?
No, we're not.
Just to take the, just to take the tower down and then just infill in between at the same plane?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, and that's what the building permit would be for.
Okay, alright, I mean, in terms of, yeah, I mean, architecturally, I don't think there's a real issue with it.
No.
Um, alright, is there any, I mean, I know there's a new tenant there now, is there any plans for them in the future to, to try to expand, to do outdoor seating or anything like that, or?
None that we're aware of yet, no.
No, okay, so they're just gonna maintain whatever within the building?
Correct.
Okay.
So, when you have contacted him probably tomorrow, last year, because of this financial situation, the town allowed a lot more seating than it's allowed. So the planning board can give you a plan that's approved, and that's fine, but for me, now that he's doing very well, I can only get up to 16 seats. So please tell him if he's going to want more, he needs to come back to his planning board.
Okay, so 16 seats is within your purview, anything more than that comes to the planning board?
Yeah.
Understood, thank you, Barbara.
Just so he's aware while it's still cold out.
Yeah, alright, so we're going back to the, just the architecture itself, nobody has, anybody have any concerns with the changes that are being proposed?
No.
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 Okay, um, so entertain a motion to remove the tower as proposed by the applicant?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, seconded by Rob? Oh, you, notion, alright, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Alright, you're welcome, have a good evening.
Thanks for your patience. Thank you for your patience.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah.
Extensions.
Okay, um.
Chip, hey, I was not gonna be removing any tree.
No, okay, that's good to hear. Alright, um, we have a couple of extensions that, um, are being requested on previously approved projects. Uh, first one is Riverview Land Company LLC for an amended site plan. They're seeking their second one-year extension on amended site plan, um, citing that they're having, uh, just still continuing difficulties from the pandemic. Um, they're looking to, their, their first extension went through March 16th for this year, and they're looking for an extension to March 15th of 2024, so there's no discussion. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Uh, the second item is Hammond O'Leary Wiatowski Lot Line Realignment. They're seeking a second 90-day extension. Um, I guess the extension's to allow the attorneys to finalize legal documents. Uh, this extension would be from March the 6th, which is today, through June the 2nd, 2023. Uh, if there's no discussion?
Motion made.
Okay, motion to approve?
So made. So moved.
I think Lynn made the motion. You second it? Okay. Alright, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye, any, any, any opposed? Alright, with none, the motion carries. Um, okay, Ober, okay, Ober Creek Lot Line Realignment is seeking a second, is seeking a six-month extension on the lot line realignment, uh, which, which expires on March 15th of 2023. Uh, they're looking for an extension through September 14th, 2023. Um, I guess they're, being requested is to, um, allow Department of Health to finish their approval process, uh, so entertain a motion if there's no discussion.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
So moved.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries. It is getting warm up here.
Because it's dawn and 25 degrees in here.
Okay, um, with that, we're at the end of the agenda this evening, is there any?
Do you want to discuss the Dydel Road or no?
So, yes, Dydel Road.
Oh.
Yes, so everybody was given tonight a memo regarding the Dydel Road subdivision, or not subdivision, the Dydel Road, um, project, which is on.
Cell tower.
For the next meeting.
Yippee.
Um, there are some concerns with the, not the specific property, but the property owner who owns three continuous lots over there. So at this point, before, um, they come in front of us, uh, I guess the question here is, I guess there's some significant concerns on the other properties that they own, which are continuous to this one. Does the local law allow us to not entertain this because the application would be to deal with something other than their outstanding violations?
I'm, I'm looking for that section, and my recollection is that the planning board Existing violations, 240-47. No building permits shall be issued for special permit use where all property taxes. Further, there is an existing violation on a subject path. It deals with building permits?
This is the obstruction permit.
Hmm?
No, he said what he's looking at is under obstruction.
That was a special permit usage.
They have all these violations, though?
Is significant, and there's a lot of safety concerns.
Yeah, there's a lot of violations.
Oh, 240-12. Um, where an applicant, person, business firm or corporate entity has received written notification that there is an existing violation of the zoning law or other town laws concerning the premises, no permit of any type shall be issued. Process or approved by the town for said applicant until such violation is cleared and removed to the satisfaction of the appropriate town agency or resolved by due legal process except where said permit will correct the existing violation. That's 240-12.
Now, does it matter that it's another parcel? They're, like, the parcel, the other two parcels are owned by the same trust, the same two main trustees, the all three parcels?
It says concerning the premises. So this, so are there violations on this parcel?
No, this is an empty parcel owned by the trust. But they own other parcels in the same trust, and the same two trustees that are named the parcels themselves.
Um, we'll have to look at it.
Yeah, because that would be, uh, yeah, because if they're not going to, you know, if there's something that we don't have to entertain, then maybe we should let the applicant know, um, that there is an issue. And again, that's usually the driving factor for the owner of the property to kind of take care of the, uh, the issue.
Yep.
I know, though, I remember back when, it was the previous fire inspector, that's when it all started, and he retired, about four years ago now?
Yes, but then the current fire inspector, building inspector, et cetera, we've all been out, and we've employed and urged social services, the DBC, the Department of Health, and the, the county sheriff to help us, and the violations just keep coming back like a boomerang.
So we can't do this.
And they're very safety concerns on the term.
Yeah.
So then we can't entertain that?
So we can look at this tomorrow, and then we'll report back to by email, but if we can't hold it up, you know, we'll, we'll work on something to both the applicant and for the project and to the owners.
Right, I, they would help, we'll have that ahead of the meeting, just so that, you know, that the applicant can be aware, you know, instead of them.
I mean, I, I think the thing.
Instead of, instead of the application being made, and it's, again, there's a window of time, again, for the approval, um, you know.
I think the thing to do at this point would be to send a, send a, to not put it on the next agenda, and to send a letter to the applicant saying that we are investigating these issues.
And whether it's not the applicant or the project, as far as closing the law, and there are issues with them.
Correct.
Okay, we can do that tomorrow.
Okay, so we'll push, so we'll have the, so we'll have the, we'll have them pushed off to a different meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think the applicant, I think the applicant needs to understand that there are issues.
Yes, okay, so currently, so we'll take them off for the, um, was that the 20th then? Okay. Okay.
Thanks for that.
So with that, is there anything else anybody wants to discuss this evening?
I'd, I'd like to have a attorney-client session with the board.
Okay, um, hmm? Yeah.
So you could close the meeting.
So we have to, uh, yes.
Actually, um, Lynn and.
To go an executive session.
Well, just attorney-client, so you could close the meeting out, nothing, no action's gonna happen, so.
So they're not involved, so.
Correct.
Only three of us here that are.
Right.
So it's basically not a quorum.
Right, notwithstanding the fact that it's attorney, attorney-client.
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Last two hours, I can't remember a time when we accomplished this much in two hours.
No.